Wednesday, September 28th. Please rise and Mayor Pro Tem Boiles will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, please place your hand over your heart and repeat after me.
...... to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Persak?
Here.
Councilmember Bran?
President.
Councilmember Dugan?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Boiles?
Here.
Mayor Fontaine?
Here. Now is the time for public communications, related to city business only, five minutes per person, thirty minute total. How many people want to speak today? Oh, good, okay. Public Communications is open.
Mayor, you may want to have it. Item one, there is a few.
Oh, okay, for item one, which is 540 East Imperial, there'll be another opportunity to speak then. Yes, if you'd like to speak on anything other than 540 Imperial, now is the opportunity. And seeing none, we will close public communications. May I have a motion to read everything by title only?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose five zero, thank you. Special Order of Business. This is the time and place here to fix for a public hearing regarding, one, introduction and first reading of an ordinance, specific plan amendment number SPA 16-01 for SPA number 10-03 and Development Agreement Amendment number 16-01 for Development Agreement number 10-02, amending the 540 East Imperial Avenue Specific Plan and number two, adoption of a resolution approving the addendum to the previously adopted Environmental Impact Report, EIR, for the 540 East Imperial Avenue Specific Plan and Mitigation Monitor and Reporting Program, Environmental Assessment Number EA-1154, and authorizing the city manager to execute an affordable housing agreement with the developer in a form approved by the city attorney's office. The project site is located at 540 East Imperial Avenue in the 540 East Imperial Avenue Specific Plan, 540 EIA SP Zone. The site applicant, D.R. Horton Homes, CA2 Incorporated, property owner, El Segundo Unified School District. Fiscal impact, none. City Clerk, was proper notice of a hearing given in a timely manner?
Yes, it was.
And has any written communication been received regarding this public hearing?
It has, and you've been copied.
The public hearing is now open. City Manager, who will make the presentation?
Mayor Greg McClain, our Planning Manager, will make the presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. We're here to discuss EA 1154, the 540 East Imperial Avenue Specific Plan, modifications. Draw your attention to the screen, the vicinity map. The project is at the old abandoned school site on Imperial Avenue between Sheldon Street and McCarthy Court. McCarthy, sorry, McCarthy Court, and north of Walnut Avenue. A little bit of history, this project was originally approved in March of 2012 when the City Council adopted the EIR and approved the specific plan. It was approved with two options. Option one was 151 unit assisted living plus 154 unit senior housing. And option two was 34 multifamily units and 24 single family units. The approval required the applicants to pursue option one for a specified period of time, and after that period, they entered into an agreement with D.R. Horton Homes to purchase and develop the property pursuant to option two, and that's where we stand today. This is a side-by-side site plan comparison. On the left is the original option two site plan, and on the right is the proposed modification. As you can see, they're substantially very much the same, a little bit of building orientation change at the top, otherwise pretty much the same thing. I'm going to focus on the new plan a little bit here. The north portion of the property is to be developed with a multifamily residential. This is the part facing Imperial Avenue. The access point is in the middle of the property, right off of Imperial Avenue. There are six buildings proposed. This is where the 34 multifamily units will be. The southern portion is all single-family residential. The access point is off of Walnut Avenue, one point of access. There are 24 homes in here, one of them fronts on Walnut, the rest of them on private street that circles around the interior. A little bit of an overview of what we're going to be discussing, there's an amendment to the specific plan, amendment to a development agreement, there's an amendment to a vesting tentative track map, which I'm not going to go into, but it involves the widening of the street and the enlargement of lots. And then there's the addendum to the EIR. So I'll take a few slides to discuss the specific plan amendment. First, we're going to, I'm only going to discuss things that are changing or significantly changing. Anything that remains substantially the same, I'm just going to skip over it for the sake of brevity here. The first item is the floor area ratio in the building area. In the single-family residential portion, the approved floor area ratio was .53. And for the benefit of the public, what that is, you take the area, the square footage of the lot, and you multiply it by .53, and that tells you how large the building can be. The applicant is requesting this be up to .58. It's a small change, but it will add additional size to the houses. On building height, the original approval was for 35 feet to the roof line. They're asking for 35 feet, six inches, and the total maximum height to the highest elements was 45, and they're asking for 47. Let me illustrate what that is. The 35 feet, six inches is approximately right there. There's a 42-inch parapet above this, so it's a little higher, or a little lower than the top of the main part of the building. These little structures on the top are basically vestibules for the stairwells to get to the decks that are on the roof. There's no livable space up there at all. It's just a little landing at the top of the stairs and a door. These would be allowed up to 47 feet at the highest point, so on the sloped roof, I've pointed to the highest points. Average is probably closer to 45 feet, the low end may even be below that. Guest parking, this only applies to the multifamily side. Original approval was 22 spaces, the applicant is requesting 18. Let me show you the distribution of the guest parking spaces. And we're focusing only on the northern part of the property, in those areas there. This is a very nice distribution, every building has some parking near it. The reduction, we feel, is quite reasonable, given that there are affordable units in this proposal. And under state law, various state laws, and they're not strictly applicable in this case, where there's affordable units, you can have a reduction in parking, and guest parking is one of the target areas. So this is a reasonable request, we feel. Single-family residential, again, we're talking about setbacks. The approved was front and rear should be 30 feet combined. There was also a requirement that the front be at least 22 and the rear be at least five. Signs were 10% of the lot width. Let me show you rather than go with text. A typical lot proposed here, in the front yard, they're proposing 20 feet where there's habitable space and 24 in front of the garages. 24 is a good number because it allows four feet of sidewalk and 20 feet to park cars on the driveway without hanging over the sidewalk. The sidewalks are on the property, it's not in the street side. In the rear, they're proposing 20 feet plus a 15-foot jog in the rear wall of every building, which leaves five feet in the other part. So on the one side, you get 40 feet, which is better than the previous requirement. On the other side, you get 29, which is only one foot less, but I think on the whole, city does well with this. And then on the sides, they're proposing a straight five feet. Now, these lots are typically 53 feet, so we're going to lose about four inches of setback. I don't think we need to go into that much more. Street widths. Now, remember, this is only in the single-family residential portion, and this, these are private streets. The original approval required everything to be 36 feet wide. The requested change is for 32 feet on the interior and 26 feet for the driveway off of Walnut. Let me show you where those are. So interior streets will go from 36 to 32. I want to point out that 32 feet in width is enough to have parking on one side of the street and still be able to accommodate very comfortably two-way traffic on the rest of the street. The driveway goes from 36 to 26. We feel this is really quite appropriate because at 26 feet, you've got 13-foot wide lanes for two ways. 36 is almost a three-lane street. We've confirmed with the fire marshal that fire trucks can navigate this, so feel very comfortable in recommending this. For modulation, the old one required, or basically mimicked the language of the municipal code, we know that there's problems with that. The new language they proposed is also a little bit complicated, but let me show you the results. This is a typical elevation, one, two sides of the same building. We feel that modulation is quite adequately addressed here. You can see parts that are popped out and parts that are recessed. Onto the development agreement. The development agreement includes certain development rights for the applicant, basically the modified development standards that I just outlined, impact fees to be locked in at today's rate, and expedited plan check and inspections. These are all very reasonable and very typical types of requests. The city benefits, also in the development agreement, the most obvious benefit is that long vacant and underutilized property gets developed. There's an increase in housing, particularly six affordable units included in this proposal, and $1 million in direct community contributions, which I'm sure the applicant will elaborate There was an EIR, as I mentioned in the beginning, we prepared an addendum to the EIR. The mitigation monitoring program and the statement of overriding considerations are not significantly changed, not changed at all, as a matter of fact, so those would still be in effect as they were. This was brought to the Planning Commission, I think, three weeks ago. Couple of issues that came up, dust and noise, these are already addressed in the mitigation monitoring program. We feel they're adequately addressed there, but the applicant has volunteered to take a step further and to notify neighbors whenever they're going to engage in activities that will increase dust and noise. Fumigation and vermin control, same thing. They've voluntarily agreed to inform neighbors whenever they're going to be out there fumigating the site, because I understand there's rats and other critters out there that need to be taken care of. Shared fences and views from Sheldon Street, I'm going to leave that for the applicant to deal with in their presentation. The loss of the baseball field, I'll be letting the applicant address that, they have a proposal that I think will help to mitigate that. And then there was the question of LEED certification. The applicant is proposing to develop these houses to 15% above the Title 24 standards, which is effectively, it's the equivalent of LEED, but we believe more appropriate for residential than LEED would be. LEED is geared mostly toward commercial buildings, office buildings, so we feel like we're getting the benefit of LEED, but through a more appropriate means. So the recommended actions would be to adopt the addendum to the EIR and approve the specific plan amendment, the development agreement amendment, and the subdivision amendment, and then to schedule the second reading for the ordinance. And in summary, these are the applicant's requests, these are the city's benefits, we covered those earlier, and there's a color version of the site plan. So at this point, conclude the presentation, I'm available for any questions. We also have our consultants here to answer any more detailed questions.
Thank you, Greg. So the public hearing is now open for public input, and the applicant is the first presentation?
Councilmember, thank you very much for giving us this time.
Go ahead, pull that, yeah, microphone.
Thank you very much for giving us this time to present this to you. On behalf of our division president, John Skow, who regrettably could not be here today, we are very excited about this project, and we do very grateful to the City Council and to the Plant Commission for hearing and considering our project. We have a presentation, and soon as that comes up, I understand, for the sake of brevity, we'll fly through this. Also, we have our entire development team here, we'll not introduce them unless they're called to speak. I'm sorry, I'm Everett Kang, I forgot. Vice President of Architecture and Foreplay, I apologize about that.
I think we'd like to meet your team, Eric.
Would you like me to introduce them? Sure. So you already know Mr. Bureau?
Yes.
He's with the CLS. We have Mr. Brent Caldwell, owner of CLS. We have Mr. Hopkins, Chris Hopkins, who is our VP of Sales and Marketing, and then we have Mr. Nick Mania with William Hesman-Holch Architects, fabulous architect. So if you want to go past the cover sheet. Really, I'm not going to read this to you. Essentially, we've been building houses for a very long time, not me personally, I'm not that old, but for over 30 years, and we do a quality home, and I'd like to thank Chair Baldino for speaking very highly of our product. He has dealt with D.R. Horton products in the past. So if you, if we'd like to read, go ahead, but I'm not going to belabor this at this point. What I would really like to do is, if you could go to the next screen, this is a sample of our work that we have done. The one on the left is LA, the one in the top right is Valencia, top, bottom left is Laverne, and the multifamily on the bottom right is in Whittier, and that's a good representation of the quality of work that we do as a builder. And if you go to the next slide really quickly, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Nick Mania, who is with William Hesman-Holch Architects, and he will walk you through the architect itself. Thank you.
Thank you, Everett. Hello, my name is Nick Mania, Senior Designer, Senior Associate with William Hesman-Holch Thank you again for allowing us to present this, what we feel is going to be a beautiful Few things that we'd like to touch on, our design vision, when we were tasked with the challenge of looking at what's this site, there were needs for 34 multifamily, 24 single-family homes, incorporating the existing grade into the site, into the architecture. And we felt that this was, this turned, this is going to be turning out to be a really nice neighborhood. If we can go to the next slides, we can sample through, and you're already familiar with the site. To the north is our multifamily, total of six buildings, four of which are five homes, townhomes, three-story with roof decks. And in between them, you have the seven-plex buildings, also seven-plex with seven, with three-story plus roof decks. To the south is our single-family homes, two-story. Although the nice thing about the single-family, what we've done is we've introduced a one-story at street level. You pick up the grade, we were proposing a 10-foot retaining wall in the architecture, minimize retaining walls on the perimeter and creating a real nice neighborhood. The slide shows a little bit of the variety that we're proposing in the multifamily and in the single-family. Over the two plans that we're proposing, we have two different architectural styles and three different schemes each, which in totals to a total of six color schemes. We've also taken into account water flow, rain flow, where everything will be self-contained onto this site, and this slide represents the sheen flow of rainwater. As I was mentioning before, this cuts, cuts section through our site, explaining the challenge we were faced with, but at the same time, we looked at it as an opportunity to create some really cool architecture. To the west, you have this two-story home fronting on the street, and just across the street from that, you will have the one-story at street level that steps down into a two-story home to the back, to the rear yard. You can see that's happening twice on the site. This is a enlarged version of the same slide. Here is one of the homes that has the one-story to the front, just a little bit more detail so you can get a feel for that one-foot drop to the rear yard. What we have here is a video that will be flying through the neighborhood. We have our in-house rendering studio that produced this for you to give you a better sense of what we see our neighborhood will be here. This first drive is down Imperial Avenue, looking towards the townhomes. This is right across the street from the dog park, looking into our neighborhood. Single-family homes are to the south here, this is the main entry into the single-family One of the cool things about allowing to narrow the street on that main entry has allowed us to give a little bit of landscape and give it a nice street presence. The architecture styles we have here are, is a contemporary, along with the arts and crafts, traditional style, we felt they go well together. Thank you.
Thank you.
We've also wanted to touch a little bit on the front of the elevation. This, you've also seen in the previous presentation, this is our three-story townhome. This is the seven-plex building, three-story plus roof decks. We're going to have this playful, contemporary style, and also bring eyes on our alleys that we're proposing in between. But you will notice that both sides of this building has front doors on the alleys, so makes it for a well-designed neighborhood. We also have a few slides from the existing neighbors, Nick, if you wanted to. Nick Bureau will talk a little bit more about that.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, my name is Nick Bureau, and we've been, what do you have in front of you, some of the, some of the different homes where we took direct views from, so you get, so we could take the 3D model that we built for the site and have anticipated artistic view of where, what the views are going to be like. This is not the ultimate final view of it, but, and click to the next slide. This is, this is a view from 944 Sheldon Street, anticipated, looking from, from the rear yard. You can see that you can see the multifamily, the rooftops of that, of, that pierce into that height, but are not looking into, into the bedrooms of the single-family homes behind it. We anticipate, and one of the items that we're supposed to, that we're, that I'm sharing with you, is the, is the, is the walls, so we anticipate we will be building that screen wall for all the property owners along Sheldon as part of our, part of this effort, because we will build the retaining wall, and there'll be a screen wall in the backyard. Coming further south, this is 934 Sheldon, again, this is the anticipated view at approximately six-foot height. You can see the rooftops of the single-family homes. Going further down Sheldon, this is 912, this is looking catty corner, and then at this point, you can, even with the six-foot wall, there is, you can see the balconies of, of the home, but one of the things we're working with staff is the ability to go to eight feet in height with the screen wall, and that is, is the flexibility in our specific plan to do that, so the, the screen wall will be built on top of our wall, so we can do that. Slide. Then we come around the corner, this is 539 on Walnut, this is looking right into the sides of the single-family homes, and there's no, no obstruction there, then we, slide, please, and McCarthy Court, this is looking from 921, where the, where the retention area is back there, and at, at a six-foot tall wall, again, you see some, some of the homes, the, but it's mostly the rooftops, and the rooftop, and the decks on the single story, on the second story. Two other things that I wanted to, wanted to cover was the loss of, of the baseball field and the DA split. I've been, one of the things that we are proposing, there's the distribution of funds, there's, there's, there's some money coming to the general fund, there's some monies that are going to be part of the affordable housing program that needs to be managed, and we're proposing to fund that for a term of 20 years. There's also a contribution to the Aquatic Center for $100,000, as well as the Little League for $100,000, for a total of $1 million, that's going to be. That concludes our presentation.
Thank you. So now the public communication, the public hearing is open for anybody who'd like to speak.
Hello. My name is Ron Heredia. I represent El Segundo Little League as a board member, and I just want to speak to the presentation and what was just previously mentioned about the baseball field. We, as El Segundo Little League, are one of the organizations in the city most impacted by the loss of that land or the baseball field use for our organization. The Imperial Field is historically, and, well, is used to play baseball games and hold the baseball practices for our Challenger Division, Rookie Division, which are the T-Ballers, and our Single-A Division. These are three divisions of the youngest players in our league. The El Segundo Little League has 400 participants each year, and the three divisions I mentioned cover roughly half or 50% of the 400, so they will be impacted and misplaced. What we have been, or had in recent communication with is D.L. Horton's generosity with providing funding to help build another field, but not just a basic field, and not even something similar to what is at Imperial currently. What we're planning is a, more, what we're titling is a miracle field, and this will be a field that is totally safe, maintenance-free for the most part, water-free, fenced in for security and safety. Will serve the needs of our Challenger Division with ramps and wheelchair access. Will have widely recycled rubber base paths, soft and safe wheelchair-friendly artificial grass, infield and the outfield, and wide accessible dugouts for those in wheelchairs who will be accessing the dugouts. Part of our need to replace this field and it's, there's a sense of urgency because our season starts in, on February 1st, we're able to begin practicing, and these 200 or so children will need a place to not only practice but play their baseball games and get dressed up in their uniforms and have their parents attend and participate and cheer. All El Segundo Little League players are residents of El Segundo Little League, or El Segundo City, or students at El Segundo Schools. or students at El Segundo schools. The money that D.R. Horton is donating would give a great head start to the fundraising. The anticipated cost for this miracle field is approximately $200,000. We would not, El Segundo Little League doesn't have any interest in asking the city of El Segundo to donate funding. But what we do need and would like to have considered is land and space to build the field. And overall, I would say that El Segundo Little League is part of the fabric of this community. The small-town feel, the great schools, and great baseball are three things that I think come to mind when El Segundo is discussed as a community and player, players and parents, children of the community will be impacted. So, thank you.
Any other comment?
Hello, Mayor Fuentes. Hello, everyone from City Council. My name is Edward Lee. I'm also a parent of the Little Leaguers as well as a board member. Couple of things we wanted to talk about. Thank you for D.R. Horton for the generous donation because I've been on the board for about four years and I know that field space has always been one of those things that's been a problem. You know, Little League, at least in the four years I've been on the board, has been continually growing. One of the things that we're not getting additional is field space. And by having Imperial Field disappear, we saw it as an issue that was probably going to arise in the coming years. But with the generous grant that you have, the fundraising, I think we're going to do, the support we have from the city council, the support we're getting from the Ed Foundation, well, not the Ed Foundation, but most of the folks in the schools allowing us to build another field, I think is going to really help a lot of the kids. When you look at El Segundo Little League, we have kind of a rich tradition. We've been here since 1954. We're probably one of the smaller South Bay cities. But yeah, every time we go to play, any of our neighbors, we've been able to compete with smaller teams. We think of, it's a tradition that we've kind of set here and that foundation was starting to erode with some of the field space we have. Because as Ron stated, a lot of those kids, their first experience in the Little League was at Imperial Field. With it disappearing, practices would have been congested probably to a point where they'd only see field space maybe once a week. With your donation from D.R. Horton, with the help of the city council, with the help of El Segundo Unified, we've been able to find a spot to hopefully build a field. Like I said, one of the biggest programs we have is our challenger program. As you guys may or may not know, most of the other regions in the South Bay have actually discontinued their challenger program. This will allow us to continue it as well as grow it and be able to accommodate those particular cities. So on behalf of El Segundo Little League, as a parent of three kids that are in Little League, I think, and thank you guys from the bottom of our heart because it really does help to get our kids back on the field. And then thanks to the city council for making this happen because I know there was a lot of conversation that was facilitated through Lance, through the city council to make sure that something like this would be accommodated. And like I said, we're hoping we get this field done quickly. We're hoping we can find some additional space. And anything that you guys can do to help additionally, greatly appreciated.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. My name is Gustav Strohs and my wife and I, sitting back there. We own a company called DeBilt. We both live here in town. We live on Candy Cane Lane, right in front of Santa's Slay. We all know where that is. And we own, our company DeBilt, we rebuild homes here in El Segundo. We're spec home builders. And I just wanted to say that we're in favor of this project. We think it should move forward. Can't speak to the exact details of what you have to trade off in order to get it done. But, you know, I drive by the old school every day and although it'd be great to see it still be a school, I know those days are past and it's no longer needed as a school. It's kind of sad to see it the way it is now. And it would be nice to see it developed in the way that it's been proposed here. So we're in favor of it. Just wanted to put my vote in.
Good evening, Council. Melissa Moore, El Segundo's Unified School District Superintendent. I'm here this evening to express support of the proposed project application by D.R. Horton. I'd like to just share a very brief history regarding the property because it's been quite a journey for the school district. This property has actually been declared surplus property for El Segundo Unified for 37 years. There have not been El Segundo Unified School District students attending since the late 70s, although there was at one time a county program at, housed there. Over the past eight years, the district has actively sought solutions and actually worked cooperatively with the city to achieve some of those outcomes. In November 2008, the district sought a ground lease. In March 2009, the district looked to develop the property through requests for interest and information. And at that time, it was the recession and so there was no interest. In June 2010, the district entered into an agreement with Mar Ventures in order to obtain the development entitlements for the property and worked successfully with the city to achieve that outcome. The district entered into agreement with Public Private Ventures to develop a request for proposals for long-term ground lease. And we only had one interested party in September of 2012. We went out again in 2013, in 2014, and again with no success and no terms and agreements reached. When I came on board in July of 2014, I was charged with, take care of it, let's get this done. What do we need to do to either achieve a ground lease or a final outcome regarding the property? So it's with a great deal of pride that the board adopted a resolution in March of 2015 to consider sale of the property. And we're very pleased to enter escrow with D.R. Horton. This indeed has been quite a journey for the district. We are extremely pleased with the outcome and fortunate to have a reputable business owner and business in D.R. Horton. I've had the opportunity to work with them over the past 15 months and have had extensive dealings with many of their representatives, including Mr. Skull, who was unable to be here this evening, who is a vice president and takes active role in the rollout of this program. We've met with them to review plans and the proposal, I believe, is truly pleasing and aligned with community aesthetics. The district provided the facility for D.R. Horton to host two community outreach meetings, which were well-attended. I personally attended both of those meetings and they were actively listening to the feedback of residents who came to be an active part and engage in the process. Representatives have been approachable, responsive, professional, community-oriented, and friendly. They've worked in cooperation with our school district and ensured a smooth transition. And one of those things have been the challenge of working with the Little League to find a new home. I do think it's important to say, I met Lance Giroux, the president of Little League, for coffee on Sunday and we had an opportunity to talk about the fact that as a school district, we simply can't meet the, the needs of adequate space for this growing league. We have done everything we possibly can to accommodate them. We have a home for challengers. They'll be playing at the middle school and the district has provided written pledge to them for that to occur on Sundays from 2:00 to 4:00 at the middle school. However, we're going to have kids playing in fields, going crossways, little ones, whose balls, who knows how long they could go. We could have a future pro-leaguer in there. So we've got challenges and we want to work with them to solve those challenges. But we do need the city to be part of that solution. I believe this proposal is a win-win. It's a win-win for our school district because it could mean new students for El Segundo Unified. And we are proud of this district and what we offer our children. This is a win-win for the city because it's going to take a long vacant property that at times attracted undesirable elements and the district worked hard to try and mitigate those. But it's going to transform it into housing with contributing members to the city of El Segundo. And for the surrounding residents, I realize it'll be a change. But this new development will more likely improve their property values because they're going to go from an eyesore property to one where they're going to have a stable population, who's going to look out in the spirit of El Segundo for one another and be sure that everybody is safe and it's a beautiful area. So thank you for consideration. On behalf of El Segundo Unified School District, we hope you give this serious consideration and fully authorize our support of this. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor Fuentes. Hello, City Council. Can you guys hear me okay? My name is Gina Hoffman and this is my husband Greg. And we own a company called Outside Matters and we've been doing business here in El Segundo for the past 22 years. For the past five years, I've been a Realtor and I'm affiliated with Palm Realty. We've raised our five children, Mary, Julia, Grace, Charlie, and Lucy, in this great community and have been involved with many organizations throughout the years. I became familiar with the 540 East Imperial School Site in the spring of 2015. I requested the RFP to learn more about the project. I did have a buyer, but my buyer wouldn't go above 18 million and we all know it went for way more than that. I attended the live sale at the school board in July of 2015 and was there when D.R. Horton was the top bidder and awarded the project. That was the day I had the pleasure of meeting a representative from D.R. Horton. And I've met several others since then, a few times. I've followed it closely for the past 15 months and I know how important it is to our city, our school district, and our community. When D.R. Horton secured the bid for 540 East Imperial, I decided to do a little homework about this company that is coming into our city. The first communities, as we saw, were built in the Dallas-Fort Worth area over 35 years ago. Yes, they are America's largest home builder. Donald R. Horton had a vision and with the talented people beside him, perseverance and hard work, he achieved the American dream. There's a quote I saw yesterday when we were at our daughter's volleyball game at El Segundo High School. It's painted on the wall. And by the way, they beat Beverly Hills. The quote says, "Some people want it to happen. Some people wish it would happen. Others make it happen." That's said by the great Michael Jordan. Our city has always made things happen and now is the time for the next chapter in the history of El Segundo to begin. D.R. Horton has a product that appeals to the masses. Their attention to detail is unparalleled. The impact it will add to our community, our property values, and the opportunity for individuals and families is significant, to say the least. When D.R. Horton asked our company, Outside Matters Landscaping, if we would be open to storing the pod for El Segundo Little League, it took us a second to say yes. El Segundo Little League is close to our hearts as our son Charlie played from rookie ball through majors, being an All-Star for three years. And our daughter Lucy has played for the past two years. My cousin Bethany Janusso's husband, Peter Janusso, was president of the league the past few years as well. So we, needless to say, are vested with El Segundo Little League and as many other things in our community. Our company, Outside Matters Landscaping, started doing business in El Segundo 22 years ago. From our dining room table, which progressed to a converted closet in our laundry room with the fax machine on the dryer, to a home office and finally a warehouse in Smoky Hollow. We install new residential and commercial landscape. We installed the tallest green wall in Los Angeles on the PAC Mutual Building in downtown LA, facing Pershing Square, as well as 100-foot green wall at the VA Hospital in Long Beach, plus many other projects, green walls and green roofs throughout the Los Angeles area. The latest addition to our company is the Woo Outdoor Kitchen. The Woo Kitchen is a precast concrete kitchen. It is streamlined and we believe it will be received well throughout California and we'll be producing them here in El Segundo. We would like to thank D.R. Horton for their generosity and their donation of $100,000 to the Aquatic Fund, $100,000 to El Segundo Little League, as well as the other monies earmarked for various projects in El Segundo. Thank you, El Segundo City Council, for your time, commitment, and dedication to our city.
Hello. Thank you all for your time and commitment in serving our city council. My name is Lynn O'Neil James and I am a resident of El Segundo and have been for over 48 years. I'm also a real estate broker in El Segundo and have been for over 30 years. And I love our town and I believe that the current plan to build the housing at the old Imperial School Site is exciting for our city. It is in much demand and I believe it to be exactly what the perfect solution is for the current eyesore that exists right now. I have had the opportunity to meet several of the gentlemen at D.R. Horton and they totally get El Segundo. They are respectful of what El Segundo needs and they build beautiful projects all over the country. For as long as I have been involved in our city, there has always been a huge demand for housing. D.R. Horton has an excellent reputation and I am super excited to see this project move full steam ahead. Thank you.
Nate Chidick, thank you guys for, for hearing us out. I live on 830 Sheldon Street. I have been for the last 12 years. I will absolutely see this new property being built. I'm grateful for it. I fully support it. I just wanted to share that, number one. Number two, for the past three years, I've been the vice president of Little League. One of my main jobs was to schedule challenger divisions' games every Sunday. All right, this is inclusive of having our majors division play alongside with the challengers division. It's a wonderful thing, right? Learning happens on both sides. The highest level of community spirit is involved. One of my biggest fears has been, what are we going to do? We lose this field that is so important to us. I'm so happy about the contribution that we're going to be receiving, hopefully upon your approval. This solves a big, big problem for us, a big problem. So leave it up to you guys to make the decision, but I wanted to voice my support. Thank you.
Seeing no more public, we will close the public hearing and council discussion.
Yeah, I'm also excited about the project. Had an opportunity to meet with D.R. Horton at length the last couple of weeks and looked at the project in detail in terms of the specifics of the development. Also, I think the council, or at least I was trying to get my head around the variances that were requested and what that might entail for the city and what would be an appropriate set of fees. And so in all, full transparency, for me, it was getting comfortable with the level of fee that's reasonable for a developer without feeling like somewhat of an extraction of fees, as we want to become and be a business-friendly city. So I say here, I sit here in full confidence of the project, knowing that we vetted it fully. Feel comfortable with the due diligence that the planning commission did, that the school district did, really all the stakeholders in this room to ensure that this project does live up to what El Segundo is all about in terms of core values. And I also feel like the city is going to be much better off with the development and more specifically with the funds as well that this, that the project's going to allow. So thank you to D.R. Horton.
Mayor. Somebody explain to me about the affordable units. I believe there was mentioned there were six affordable units. What does that mean?
Good evening, Council. My name is Damian Delaney. I'm with Michael Baker International. And I guess I'm the affordable housing consultant. The affordable units, the six affordable housing units will be sold to affordable residents, meaning that they will have to make less than a certain amount of money that will be determined. They will be sold at a specific price and then they will be recertified for 20 years while they live in those homes.
Have you got your pricing on these single-family dwellings and multiple units worked through yet?
That would be a question for D.R. Horton.
No, we don't have, we don't have those, what those numbers are going to be, but we have an idea of what we think they've. And we think that the condos, townhomes will be somewhere in the $800,000 range and the homes will be somewhere in the $1.6 million range. That's, that's.
1.6?
That's at this point. I mean, we understand that once, once they get built, then they're, it could be higher, it could be lower, but, but the baseline is 1.6 million for the single-family home.
And then the affordable units, are those all in the multiple-family section?
Yes, they are. Yeah. So there are six buildings. Each one of the buildings will have one unit. And the pricing of those, those, those units get priced based on the income of the individuals that are pre-qualified. It'll be D.R. Horton's obligation to pre-qualify. Horton's obligation to pre-qualify those, so they'll, they'll be treated as D.R. Horton clients as they're buying a unit. So we, we do that pre-screening process. Once that gets done, it gets given to the city, then the city approves that and then those become the residents for those units. Thank you.
I have another question about that. I had asked if there was any way to earmark those for the military who serve at Los Angeles Air Force Base. I know that there's a legal definition for affordable housing, but typically enlisted members of the military make less than other people?
And yes, we've, we have looked into that and we do because we're the pre-qualifier that we can prioritize to be. So yes, we can make a, we can make a distinction that prioritization would go to enlisted or a, or vet.
Thank you very much. I want to echo what Dr. Moore said and what I heard Drew say about all my dealings and we've only had a few have been wonderful and you've been very open with the things that I've questioned you about and asked about, been very responsible and have already shown what a good corporate citizen D.R. Horton intends to be, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Fuentes.
And I'm glad this day has finally come, because I was a teacher here in the El Segundo Unified School District in the 1970s. I believe Imperial Street School closed in the 1975-76 year, or 40 years to today, and it's good to finally move this to a better space.
And I also want to compliment D.R. Horton once again, as my colleagues have. Dealing with you has been very, very easy and you've been very transparent and we're thankful for your commitment to our community and gifting the funds to the Aquatic Fund and the Little League. So thank you.
Thank you.
And I too was happy to meet with D.R. Horton and discuss fees and things to make sure that the city was benefiting from this as, as they should probably. And I'm glad to see the development continue here. Having just lived across the street from a development on Maple that took a little bit of time, I encouraged D.R. Horton to maintain their friendly outreach and their ability to continue to be good neighbors because you're going to be impacting the people that live around there and it's not easy to live next to a construction site. But there are ways to make that less invasive and I encourage you to meet with the neighbors and work closely with them and, and do your best to not impact them. And if there is an issue and something does happen, I encourage D.R. Horton to continue to be good neighbors and settle that and take care of that immediately. So I'll be looking at that as we go forward.
We'll do that.
An initial concern I had with narrowing the streets was safety, because that's utmost to every council member up here, but I'd been assured repeatedly and it was stated tonight that the engines and the larger truck, I can't think of the name of it, with the, the driver in the back, but that they would be able to maneuver those streets. So that's very important. I want to thank D.R. Horton for investing in our city. We say it here all the time, but when people put millions and millions of dollars into our city, it makes us look good, it increases the property value. And I go all over this county, I have people come up to me, almost every meeting I go to, they're from out of town and say, "We would love to live in El Segundo, but you don't have any property for sale. You don't have any homes." Lynn can attest to that. So here's 58 more units for people to, to move around in town or move to town, like Dr. Moore said, more students for our school district. So I think it's very exciting. I'm grateful for that. And again, I'm grateful for your consideration of the military.
So I'd like to ask Chief Donovan to come up, please. So on movement of the emergency fire equipment through, that would be possible with the parking of the cars in there on the one side of the road, you can still get through within park there?
That's correct, sir. We're comfortable with the design and the issues that we always have with any development is access and water, because we need fire access and the ability to put water if there's a fire. This development has met all those needs.
You need to come in on the Imperial side or can you come in off of Walnut?
We could access off of both sides.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And then, I didn't have a chance to meet with D.R. Horton because I was in Sacramento the last few days, but I wanted to hear a little bit more about these two $100,000 pledges and what the, if there's any restrictions around those. Some of you may know more than I do on that because you talked to them. Tomorrow, we're spending some time talking about the Aquatic Center and I'm wondering, can this be used towards the Aquatic Center or is it hooked to the Sari Plunge? What are the qualifications there?
Dr. Brandt, it's probably a more appropriate question to staff and the way the conditions are written, or the requirements are written in the development agreement, the $100,000 would go towards the city's Aquatic Fund or the city council to determine how to use. With respect to the $100,000 commitment to the Little League, because this is an agreement between the city and D.R. Horton, staff felt it was important that the, D.R. Horton either pay the city the $100,000 that we would then can transfer to the Little League or show us proof that the, that the $100,000 had been contributed to the Little League so that we could confirm that that had been done and that that condition had been satisfied. So the $100,000, that $100,000 goes to the Little League to decide how to use.
And that money going to the Little League, one way or another, that's obligated to be focused on the Challenger program, not Little League in general?
The developer's intent is that it be used for the Challenger field, although the Challenger field, and then the Challenger field, I think, potentially has multiple uses, and for the Challenger League. It's going to be up to the Little League, though, to decide how it actually spends those dollars.
Their board. Thank you.
Well, the actual agreement says developer will contribute $100,000 to El Segundo Little League parenthetical Challenger Division to be contributed to city no later than 60 days in the First Amendment. So it does sound like it specifically goes to the Challenger Division.
Is payable when?
60 days from the date of this today, or from the date this becomes effective, which would be 30 days following the second reading, which is scheduled for October 18.
October 18. Thank you.
Then there's two, $250,000 payments being made to the city's general fund that are not restricted.
And I may have misunderstood. I thought the $100,000 was going to the aquatics facility, to the fundraising, so.
There is another $100,000 going to the Aquatics Fund.
Fund, okay. That's why when I asked what they were going to name after D.R. Horton, I was told that they weren't looking to have their name on anything.
So that money's coming to city, it's not going to the foundation that's been set up to close the gap? I just think it's really important to get this, you know, understood and squared away so we don't wonder later what was for what. So the money we have in an aquatics fund is all undesignated. It could go to the Plunge or it could go to the new Aquatic Center. It doesn't have strings on it.
Right, and there's another $500,000 going to the city that doesn't have any strings on it.
As far as the contributions to the Aquatics Fund and the Little League field and to the city, I think those are, are good steps in the, in the right direction. I personally would have liked to have seen a little more green space in the development. I think, you know, we maxed out the, the occupancy with housing and, you know, when you look around at the different locations around here, typically if somebody's going to develop a section like that, there's some green space or some recreational facility that's incorporated with the design and this design didn't pick that up. I think that would have been a better addition to it and would have fit better into the city if they would have contributed to some of the actual, I mean, creating some of the recreational facilities for, for residents. But, you know, that would have been a better design, in my opinion. Just, I'm not going to stand in the way of it, but I think we missed the boat on that one, to be honest with you.
And then the available parking on the street outside the driveway, is it going to be sufficient, in your opinion, staff? Are we going to have people come out onto Imperial? Or we already have people out there at the dog park, extras coming out of the apartment houses on Imperial Highway? Is this going to spill over into that mix?
Dr. Brandt, each, each home has a two-car garage. Each home has a two-car width driveway. There are 19 guest parking spaces for the 24 homes, so in staff's opinion, yes, they're...
19 guests? Is that what you said?
Eight, I'm sorry, 18 guest parking spaces on the street for the single-family homes. We don't happen to have a code requirement for single-family guest parking, but your point is well taken, which is, are there sufficient numbers? And we feel there are.
There's just a lot going on in that area and then you have all the folks visiting El Segundo to look at the planes, et cetera, that we'll be talking about at another time, but we really need to think about Imperial there and parking for the other residents who live along Imperial, people on McCarthy Court, when it comes around the corner there, an issue.
And then also on the parking, on the, in the entry into the, into the development off of Walnut, it's 26 feet. Are we not allowing parking on either side? So it's no parking, then once you go into the 32-foot, is parking on one side, correct?
That is correct.
Mark, can you clarify for the audience? Because if they're doing the math, it doesn't add up to a million. We talked about the 500 going to the general fund, the 100 Little League, 100 to the pool, but can you talk about the $300,000 for the housing compliance?
Yes, there's $300,000 being paid. Monitoring affordable housing costs money and it's time-intensive and so that $300,000 is being contributed towards the monitoring of those six units.
Because there's a 20-year commitment to them, after they're initially sold, they still have to be designated for residents who meet the criteria for affordable housing.
And the city has to monitor for that period of time.
So the families that qualify and purchase those homes at a more affordable rate, they're obligated then in the future to sell those homes again for an affordable rate?
20 years.
Mm-hmm. And we get money here at the city to oversee that, that it stays that way for two decades?
Correct.
And what happens if the owners decide to rent them or lease them?
They have to lease or rent them at affordable rates.
So that's all in their paperwork around their purchase?
Right, and having dealt with affordable units, they can take a fair amount of oversight by the city.
Greg or Sam, could you talk really briefly about why we would even want to offer affordable housing? Because it's one of the few instances in the city that we're able to do it, but just take a moment on that, please.
Well, there's, there's, there's multiple aspects to that question, but the most direct answer is that the state of California mandates that every city put together a plan that will provide for affordable housing. We don't build housing, so we have to look for creative ways and work with developers like D.R. Horton to provide affordable housing as part of their development projects. So we, we have an obligation to develop a plan and to try to provide affordable housing as do, as do all the other cities in California.
Is that the SCAG element?
Yeah, SCAG, SCAG distributes the numbers that the state provides amongst the city. So our, our allocation is smaller because we have, we're a smaller city and we have less available land, but SCAG does make an assignment to us every six to eight years, depending on the housing element cycle.
Thank you. I just want to give one more example of D.R. Horton's responsiveness. At our last council meeting, Lance came and talked about the challenge for the fields and what we could all do working together. And then the next morning, he wrote, he may have written us all, and said that Little League had been asked to move the container by the end of the month off of the Imperial Street Site. And so I wrote D.R. Horton's representative and asked if they could get maybe a 30-day stay or something. They responded immediately that yes, and that they would find an alternate place for it and they would pay to have the container moved. I mean, just again, going back to corporate citizenship, I think that they're a standard for that, just on my brief dealings with them. Thank you again. So any other comments? Okay, city attorney, will you please read the ordinance by title only?
Yes, Mayor. An ordinance amending the 540 East Imperial Avenue specific plan and amending the development agreement between the city of El Segundo and the El Segundo Unified School District relating to the same is ready for introduction.
Who'd like to introduce the ordinance? Nobody wants to introduce it?
I'll be glad to introduce the ordinance.
Get the mic on.
Let's be brought back then for potential second read and adoption at the October 18th regular meeting. Next is a resolution adopting the addendum to the previously certified environmental impact report for environmental assessment number 890 related to the 540 East Imperial Avenue Project, approving environmental assessment number 1154 and amended subdivision number 16-01 for vesting tentative map number 71582 and authorizing the city manager to execute an affordable housing agreement related to the same, ready for adoption.
Move approval or adoption of the addendum.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five-zero. Good. Thank you.
I should clear the room.
Wait, where's everybody going? Okay, we have another public hearing. This is time and place here to fix for a continued public hearing. Consideration of possible action regarding the fiscal year 2016-17 budget, including all city revenues and expenditures, and adoption of the resolution approving 2016-17 final operating and capital improvement budget and the 2016-17 appropriations limit. Copies of the fiscal year 2016-17 preliminary budget can be found in the library, city clerk's office, or on the city's website. Fiscal impact, total revenues, including transfers in, of $110,511,276. Total expenditures, including transfers out, of $121,52,234, and general fund revenues of $67,836,559. Expenditures of $67,750,355. City clerk, was proper notice of a hearing given in a timely manner?
Yes, it was.
And has any written communication been received?
None has been received.
City manager, who will make the presentation?
Joe Lilio, our director of financing.
For the continued public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protim, city council members. Real quickly, I'll try to make this as brief as possible. We have about 15, 16 slides to go through. The agenda for tonight is to go over the 16-17 preliminary general fund budget, and then we'll move into the preliminary budget for other funds. And then the recommended action is for a city council to adopt the preliminary fiscal year 16-17 budget. So go over the general fund budget first. The revenues that we're going to be presenting tonight are unchanged from September 20th, so they remain at $67,836,559. Expenditures, so there was the exercise that we went over in how to utilize the reserves. So we did incorporate that per your direction. And expenditures or various changes were incorporated into the budget. So the budget as presented on September 20th was $66,000.6. There are $3.2 million in additional net expenditures added per council direction. And then the new preliminary expenditure budget of $69.8 million. This is just a snapshot of the various revenue categories. This is the preliminary expenditure budget. So the column on the far... So the column on the far left with the numbers in it, that represents what was presented on September the 20th. Again, this is by department. The column just to the right of that is the preliminary 16-17 budget with council's direction incorporated into it. The items, the numbers that are listed in red are obviously the changes, and I will be going over what those changes were. So we can start with the city clerk's office, $38,200, and that was the part-time record technician that was converted to a full-time position per council direction. City manager's office, an additional $285,000 added to his budget, $240,000 for the marketing for Measure B, $70,000 for the emergency management coordinator, and then a reduction of $25,000 for the contract that we have in place right now for the emergency management Finance, there's a reduction of $21,775, and that's just two months' salary savings for the vacant finance manager position. Fire increase of $74,000, $62,000 for the COOPA position, $12,000 for the firefighter paramedic position, that, again, those were directed by city council to bring forward. Library represents zero dollar change, but you did move forward with eliminating three part-time positions and converting it to one full-time library assistant, so that's in the budget. Planning and building safety, a reduction of $56,787, and that's the reduction of the part-time fire marshal. Rec parks, $60,000, $50,000 for the centennial celebration, and then $10,000 for additional part-time staff hours. Non-departmental, $772,074, and there'll be a subsequent slide on that, because it was too, too many items. And then transfers out, $2,060,000 that were added, and again, there's a subsequent slide on that. So $2,060,000 in transfers out, these were the CIP items that were added, turf replacement, the police roof, annual sidewalk curb and gutter, arterial and local street rehab, fiber project, and Main Street crosswalk lighting, those add up to $260 million, so that's transfers out from general fund and transfers into the CIP fund. Non-departmental detail, we do have reduction to termination payouts, vacation is sick of $32,068, RSI lease reduction of $17,125, and then we do have various positions that were put into a parking lot, a staffing holding account, and that's the IS director, the equipment mechanic, too, the IS specialist, the city engineer, and the park reclass. Those total $360,000, and they are in the non-departmental in a holding account, and they will be brought back to the city council at a future council meeting for approval. And then we have the CAD RMS for $80,000, community cameras and license plate readers, $125,000, and the other technology funding at $256,100. Again, that totals 772074. Real briefly, the budget neutral requests that were approved by city council to bring forward. So the planning positions, we will be reducing the contractual services budget by $291,100 and adding that to the various positions above in salary and benefits. The finance position was approved, same with the public works and rec and park position. And so the revised general fund reserves for 16-17, we have general fund reserve of $12,087,064, economic uncertainty reserve of $1.5 million for total reserves of $13.6 million, where an increase of $240,000 from the prior year. And so real briefly, I want to point out here is the estimated ending fund balance at September 30th, $14.1 million, plus the revenues at 67.8, expenditures of 69.8. Estimated ending fund balance at September 30th, 2017, is $12.1 million, and again, there's the required reserve, 18% of $12,087,000, so we will have about $40,000 left in undesignated reserves. And real briefly, to go over to CIP, so this was presented to city council before, the only new item is that far right column that says CIP fund, and that totals the $2,060,000 that I went over in a previous slide. And then budgets for other funds, these items were presented on September 20th, city council gave direction to staff to include this into the 16-17 budget, and that was included. So the special revenue funds, quick snapshot of all the various funds and the total activity. Debt service fund and enterprise funds, again, it's a quick snapshot of the total activity in those funds. And this concludes my presentation. I'm open to any questions that city council may have.
Thank you. So the continued public hearing is now open for public input. Seeing a public input, may I have a motion to close the continued public hearing?
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, five-zero. Thank you. Council discussion?
I'd like to compliment the staff for managing this process so smoothly and effectively the last few months. It's been clear, it's been responsive, and gets us to a point tonight where I think we understand what you just went over and contributed to making the decisions along the way. I'm going to be voting for this budget, it's my fifth time, and it'll be the first time for me to ever vote yes on the annual budget for the city, so five times is a charm, but a lot of it is how well staff worked on this with us and made it easy to support this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brand.
Can I piggyback on that? I just want to say, the part that I enjoyed, I wish we had finished, and I think we will, we're going to finish in October, but the strategic planning component really helped guide our decision-making, and so I look forward to us finishing that as a council and with staff, and then anticipating next year that we complete revisiting that process well before the budgeting process, because I think it would just be a little bit better, but it was, was really good. So I think it helped me as a new council member...
Absolutely.
...for all of us to get on the same page in terms of what we're looking to achieve strategically, and I also appreciate, Joe, I know you've done like 20 iterations to date, so thank you for all your hard work, and your staff as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, the information's been very well presented and very clear and concise, and so thank you very much. It's been a pleasure, too, to go over it and work with you on this.
Thank you.
Again, kudos to the staff for the report. I support most of this budget. Again, I'm one of, I'm the guy that's going to come back and say that I don't support adding staff, and the reason that, you know, that's really driving me towards that is I'm, I'm a little disappointed that we changed our reserve policy. We should have, you know, we had some additional monies come to us, and the first thing we did was find out ways to spend it, and we reduced what our long, our longer-term plan was to fund the reserve budget. So right now, we've got about $700-some thousand sitting out in a parking lot, and that's roughly 1% of our overall budget, which is what we should have contributed to the reserve side of it. So I'm, I'm really, I'm concerned that as we move forward, and if we were to, as we approve any of those jobs, positions, what we're really doing is spending reserves. And categorically, I would argue that I would never spend reserves to grow an organization. I would spend reserves to maintain an organization, I would spend reserves to take on brick-and-mortar projects that we need to address, infrastructure needs, but not ongoing expenses that are going to continue to compound as we go forward. So philosophically, I'm disappointed that we didn't go to the full funding of reserves, which is where I think that money should have gone, so I'm having, just, that's my thought process, you know, how I'm thinking and where I'm, where I'm coming from.
And I agree with some of what you said, Mike, but I keep in mind that we were at 320 for employees, and we came down to 260, and we're increasing a little, but we've still showed restraint, not going back to 320. I agree with the reserves. I'm one of the people who voted to go back to 20% after it was lowered to 17%, but there were some gaps that personally I felt that, that we needed to cover. I agree with Dr. Brand, what you said about staff and what the Mayor Pro Tem and council members said. Thank you, Joe, and your staff, but I also want to thank Greg, because you're the manager, and this is your staff, so, thank you. So with that, City Attorney, will you read the resolution by title only?
A resolution adopting the 2016-17 final operating budget and capital improvement budget and the 2016-17 appropriations limit for the City of El Segundo is ready for adoption.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm choking you.
Five-zero, oh, four-one. With Council Member Dugan dissenting, thank you.
Mayor, follow-up question?
Yes, sir.
The $700,000 that's in the parking lot, as we're going to go through a series of positions here and see if they're justified, that's money that'll be replenished every year, that's not one-time money, correct?
So all the positions are covered by ongoing revenues?
Right.
Most of the reserves that are being spent are one-time expenditures, CIP, so I believe the total ongoing costs for all the staffing was under $900,000 per year.
Well, I, I for one appreciate the relaxation of the reserve level, I don't think it should have been put back to where the goal was at the last council set. I think reserves should be spent if they're one-time money on equipment and things that are one-time expenses, but this money we're talking about here is ongoing money that'll be replenished, and that's appropriate to spend on people, so we can serve the citizens of El Segundo here and not become the bank of El Segundo. Thank you.
I'll just disagree with you on that, Don. I think you establish your reserves and you fund them, and then you go and spend the money, so, and it's just a philosophical deal, you're a spender and I'm a saver here, so...
So consent agenda, any polls? Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, five-zero. Thank you, and we are going to return to closed session now, or go to closed session.
In accordance with the posted agenda.